By the tree protection advisor through the building official. And Will Rains made his application on April twenty first. He was denied in writing on May twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five. So that was not within seven working days. So pursuant to the code section twenty-two one sixteen B. The plans, the permits shall issue according to the ordinance, regardless of the the variance issue.
Can you speak to that?
I'd like to defer to our council.
I don't have it. First I heard that. You haven't heard it?
Well, it's more of a legal. I mean, have it what's your, what can you ascertain what that current ordinance is?
Not off the top of my head, pal. I don't have it in front of me.
We have it cited.
I guess while y'all are looking that up, um, Will's plan to mitigate is is extensive. He has a plan if, um, I guess you can see the lot. He wants to replace the oak tree and add a magnolia. The magnolia tree would end up in the corner that I guess is closest to to your your backyard. But he would be willing to work with us.
Uh, apologize. Um, he would be more than willing to, um, work with you as far as to to plant the tree in the place how you want it and mitigate the the best he can, you know, in addition to adding trees to the, um, to the public ground. I I understand. I love oak trees.
You're still talking about taking down a ninety year old oak tree?
Oh, I know. It hurts. It hurts my heart, but it's.
That is positioned on one side of the lot. Can the plans not be reconfigured to accommodate that? And I think Ricky had addressed that, that the the house could be turned in such a way or to save the tree.
I feel like we're missing something based on the buildable footprint.
It is buildable now. You can still build it. A much smaller footprint, but you can still build.
And still meet zoning and ordinance to how they just work their first.
Yeah, I would love to see that design.
Build a house around the tree with glass and.
Well, they, so our building inspector again mentioned that in in his statement that there is a workaround that you can, based on barriers that we've seen illustrated in three other applications, build around that. Um.
This this is completely different. This this lot, the footprint, that's completely different. Um.
So when you spoke to these architects or people, you know, to give you plans, uh, building plans, how far from the tree are they giving you? You know, so what's the, is that workable?
Sure, sure. Uh, I had I had contacted a a local architect in Louisiana to look at it as a friend. And then I contacted Amy Dosher too, you know, our planning and zoning commissioner. And your, the sort of rule of thumb is you shouldn't build twenty feet from the trunk. And any way you kind of cut it, we'd have to build an L-shaped home, which wouldn't conform with historic historic district standards. And it is in the historic district. It's right on that line. I had checked that. Um, and and then that when they say the buildable footprints not hurt twenty-five square feet, that's just overruled. So the living square footage makes right down even to seven hundred. And I think there's even like a ordinance against a certain square footage, you know, like.
What is the, uh, as far as historical society, I'm sorry, I'm new. Uh, is there any way we could overturn, you know, something from the historical, that way they could build an L-shaped house? Or would that be a?
Their recommendation board would like P and D.
P and D, so they can make a recommendation and then.
Yes, and and that, so if somebody, if somebody appeals historical and comes to you guys, does the appellate process?
I don't know if that's something we would rather pursue.
And doesn't the lot go back like a hundred and twenty?
No, that that's the, it, the lot is only sixty, sixty-one feet wide by a hundred and twenty feet deep.
Right, so can you push the house?
So, yes, we looked at doing that, but, um, my neighbor's home, Ms. Boris' home, let me show you this. It sits, her house sits two feet, two or three feet maybe from the actual fence line, the property line. And then that, I thought about that, and that forces me to have a fire hazard. Because then I have to build a house with, um, extra firewall protection and, you know, see that. So her, her, her house is right there. So if I push it all the way to the back, it creates another, another issue. But I'm, her, you know, today you couldn't get a two-foot, you couldn't get a, you couldn't get a two-footed variance right today. To build, can't build a house two feet from a property line up. Uh, so, me, hers, her home's been there for a long time. So I thought about that. So if we push the house all the way back, um, then then that creates that hazard too. But it still only leaves me with that nine hundred square feet that I'll have, and that's just overruled. So it's going to end up.
Would that, would that be if you went to the historical society to change the shape of that? The only thing is, I I guess I'm trying to see if we can exhaust all options before, I I would rather overturn the histor- historical society than cut, I guess, the ninety-two year old tree. But I don't know if that can give you the size that you need without giving it as far.
I don't know how accurate, you know, I know these people know their trees, but I had an arborist age it at like the thirty to fifty year range.
Wrong.
Well, I have a license, ar- arborist, but a- a- anyways, uh, we could, right? But would it, yeah, you could overturn historic, what do you think about that, overturn historic district's standard? So it's going to be a home that won't conform and maybe, I I've never seen an L-shaped home where it's like very narrow seventeen feet.
Prior to, prior to Katrina, there was a, excuse me, prior to Katrina, there was a house on the beach. And it built around, I'm thinking it was four or five oak trees. It wasn't the most beautiful house, but it angled all different ways. It was a few lots before Washington Street. And they made it work.
Okay.
Do you have the arborist letter?
Yeah, I have some actually.
I mean, I know I'm asking for, I don't know if that's a P and Z or not, but I think that would only help the rest of the.
Your average townhouse is about, your average townhouse is about twenty-five feet wide. So that's why I'm thinking it would be more narrow than that.
The house on the corner right next to this is the one we're live, the variance is last meeting. You build back to its original, variance is for the top.
Mr. Bracker, I don't know if she's had the opportunity to look at the ordinance. We we can't ignore. It's a basically a city, city ordinance. It's a city ordinance. We cited it in our appeal. It says that no building permit shall be issued until the tree site plan has been reviewed and approved in writing by the tree protection advisor and a permit as provided is issued or denied within seven working days of submittal. It goes on, if the applicant is not notified of approval or disapproval within seven working days, such plans shall be considered approved and such permits shall be considered issued by the tree protection advisor through the building official.
What is that ordinance number?
It is two-two dash one sixteen B.
And the dates?
The dates are, he made application April twenty first. He was denied in writing May twenty seven.
So I guess not.
The part that I'm not sure about is when they speak to application. I don't know what exactly was turned into the building department.
So is anybody?
I don't know, it's it's part, this deals with a building permit. So I don't know if a building permit was, we're trying to find that out from.
Can I, can I, uh, I guess amend the, I don't know if we can vote it or amend the, uh, motion to see if that's, because if that's true, they don't even need to be here, they can go cut the tree. Or we can vote it and maybe ask, you know, go to Old Town Society. I don't know how we want to move forward, but it denied me.
It's, it's basically what was stated and we, the date that, I'm sorry.
Before, before you did that, because it says, no building permit shall be issued until the tree site plan has been reviewed and approved in writing by the tree protection advisor and a permit as provided is issued or denied within seven working days of submittal. So that goes back into what they, what they submitted. And there's several things in there that that have to be, um, really, and so I don't know. I mean, this is just going off of a one-sided. I don't know if Ricky talked to them or, um, you know, that that's the part that I was just, I don't know.
Mr. President, could we table this?
Yeah, that, I think that's what, maybe table it until we can find out the, because I, I mean, we did have a bunch of new evidence. I don't want to send y'all back to planning and zoning over that, but if we could get some time to review to see if y'all are right about that. If not, come back. We've already had discussion. Maybe it'll even give you time to see what a plan would look like if we went to historical society.
Would, so would that be a tree work permit?
I mean, there's multiple different caveats. I mean, there's, it's including whether or not it was submitted in plans of four. And so without having that, and I'm just hoping it was here.
Well, and I, and again, I, and I, I obviously am not for cutting the oak down, but if, if part of this, I'm looking at a tree work permit that the date was four seventeen.
Not a tree work permit, is that what you're calling it?
Yeah.
Not a building permit.
Right, tree work permit. I just want to make sure we get into any.
The ordinance that she's referring to is talking about a building permit.
Okay.
Along with the application for a building permit.
But it's about a tree site plan.
You have to submit it all first.
It, you have to submit the tree site plan first, which is what we did. I mean, I'm taking this ordinance out of context with, I didn't bring all the ordinances, but I brought the pertinent ones, you know what I mean? I, it, it's the tree site plan, and that's what he submitted, what he submitted application on the twenty first. And that's what was not denied for almost a month. And this says we should be given a permit if it's not done within seven days.
Is there a way we can look at that and just table this? Does everyone give us that?
Yeah, you can. And I mean, I can argue these points all day long too, with an action of the city if it was denied. I mean, there's an argument too that the statute of limitations is ran, because when Ricky denied it, they would have had ten days from the date of that denial to appeal a city action, and we're in August.
We did appeal that.
Well, that's the circuit court.
It states in the ordinance that we appealed to the.
Yeah, but you're, you're citing two different, two different walls.
We appealed within ten days to planning and zoning.
I think this is a discussion for two lawyers to have.
I tried to do, I reached out, I reached out. I know she's busy.
Well, now we can set that up. Heather will, uh, you know, contact YR, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
I will make a motion or amend the motion to table agenda item number thirteen, which is the motion to follow planning and zoning recommendation and overturn the decision to deny tree removal permit and approve the appeal to allow for a tree removal submitted by Will Rains located at four oh three South Niquez Avenue, parcel one four nine M dash one dash two nine dash zero five one. Do I have a, a mo, do I have a second? Because I made the motion.
One and a second.
Any discussion? All right, build the motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carried, seven zero. Okay. Mayor's report?
Good.
Good, good. Council business, uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, cover the agenda item and then open up if anyone has anything else. I'll call for a motion to approve the Alice Mosley lease proposal at the Bay St. Louis Train Depot.
I make a motion.
A motion by Councilman Morton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Lewis. Any discussion? I guess I'll, I'll go ahead and open up, uh, discussion on this agenda item. And just to be blunt, I'll let everyone know here today why I'm a no. Um, I'm not against Alice Mosley, but I'm against the way this lease has been brought up to us. I think there's a lot more information that the public isn't aware of. Uh, none of us up here are just outright against Alice Mosley. Maybe some of us are, but I know I'm not. So, uh, my ask is going to be, once again, to McKenzie to give the city time to go through for three reasons. Number one, I think y'all would appreciate if the city sent the lease rather than the tenants sent the lease, which is how everyone operates in their personal life. The second problem I have is the fair market value. Um, I know we asked Mr. Rizzo to give us fair market value. He sent us some comps, and us as the council, we need to decide if we want to spend the money to get a certified appraisal. Um, if we want to spend the money to do that, I think it needs to be to go and get fair market value. But if we want to use Mr. Rizzo's baseline, I think that leads me to my third point on why I'm going to vote no tonight. And that is if we deviate anything from fair market value, whether it's a dollar, that's an in-kind donation. And we're talking about coming off fifteen dollars, fair market value possible. So with that being said, before I approve an in-kind donation, I would like to see audits, financial information, uh, and anything else that we feel is pertinent to the request. And I'm not saying this specifically to Alice Mosley. I said this to CASA, and I'm going to say it to any nonprofit that shows up asking for taxpayer money. So, uh, that's how I feel today. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to address a couple of things. And I can appreciate, um, the comments there. You know, from my four years on the council previous in the first term, I was not in a situation where there is a lease of a government building, taxpayer building, that we found a fair market value. Mayor, I think last minute said that we did get a fair market value in the old city hall at the time when the, uh, chamber was interested in it. I don't think we did that. Maybe you can validate that, Heather. Uh, but I think it was specifically said that you can, as a government entity, a government building, and if it is a nonprofit, you don't have to get it for a member value. It's based upon what the the decision of the council is. And and just let me add this.
No, I mean, you're correct.
Okay.
You, you've got to say determination.
And and I just.
I think that's where one of the confusion points came in.
And so, and then I beg the question, and so that is not a customary approach. I also don't want to get in the business as the city and as government to get to be a landlord of retail space. And I think it was specific to the old city hall while the decision was to give the chamber, because there were retail businesses that were unsuccessful there. It's wear and tear on the building. It's, you know, again, there is, my concern is that there are some benefits, obviously having Alice Mosley there for many items. But one is that Alice Mosley can bring great opportunities to repair that building. In fact, we've had some presented to us, Mike, I think there was one last year that was presented that Alice Mosley, because of their status, was able to assist with or actually go, you know, go out for our government or archives. So again, it's, I, I don't, I just haven't seen it the past four years. Would I like to get twenty dollars, uh, square foot, and we're basing that off of the depot? I don't want to compete with the depot when it comes to, you know, we have great restaurants there, we have great retail. I don't want to get in competition with them when it comes to that. So again, it has not been customary for us, and and with all that being said, a month ago, we had asked for the fair market value. I think the only estimation we got back was from a, uh, realtor in that area and the developer that has that area in the depot. I don't think they are licensed to be able to give a fair market value.
So I'll touch on that. Start with the fair market value to get that appraisal, about fifteen, eighteen, a hundred dollars. Number one, it's not budgeted. So council has to approve, spend the money on that. We cannot spend it without your approval. Second of all.
That shouldn't have been said a month ago when we asked to get a fair market.
Well, we discussed things in budget meetings as well.
We didn't make the motion.
You know, so second of all, in this time, I talked to you, told you we plan on using, just so happens, somebody from the Mosley Museum calls up this commercial appraiser and tries to persuade him a different price on going in.
I can't speak for anybody that calls based on that assumption.
Well.
You mentioned the same thing, the individual which never presented to us that was going to be an appraiser.
Just came up. Well, again, it was going to be on agenda for tonight to see if y'all wanted to go out and get an appraisal on it. But again, do we have to find another appraiser now because someone called trying to, you know, and compromise this guy? I don't know.
Can I make an illustration though? So we're looking at, the proposal here is five dollars a square foot. Right now, and this is, I, I, and I keep bringing this up, we fail to understand there is also another highly coveted asset with the city, at Old City Hall. Five dollars a square foot proposal here. The current price for that building is sixty-three cents a square foot. So why is that not being discussed as to are getting a fair market value there? Are we getting a fair market value also on that building? Has that individual been engaged?
How do you get sixty-three cents? They pay seven hundred and fifty dollars a month?
So based on the entirety of the building, it was at first.
They pay taxes?
But they don't pay any utilities. There's been utility bills that that their seven hundred dollars doesn't even cover that.
And then, once again.
Look, I'm not giving them, but you twist and bend. We're talking. Mosley eighty-five, ten, a thousand dollars.
Can I have a second? I agree with you, though. I think we need to have a budget workshop. We obviously have a ton of people here today who this is a very important topic for. Uh, I don't think we should be bullied into a lease. Frankly, that's what's trying to be done.
That's not true, and I, I would love to touch on the points that you first made when this was brought up for discussion. Um, I agree on the city presenting a lease, um, but when the lease was up, there wasn't one presented, and that's why I created a proposal.
And we're going to do that one month.
Yes, and and.
Sent two leases in that time. I might be.
Can I, can I finish real quick? Thank you. Um, because that wasn't presented, I, I came up with a proposal and and, uh, open to negotiations or questions or what that looked like. There, it wasn't, you know, opposed, it wasn't this way or that way or trying to bully it. I just want to be heard. And and the fact of for the Alice Mosley Museum going month to month makes it really hard to plan or or move forward in what we're trying to do. You know, um, and that's, it's not a bullying tactic. It just seems like we're kind of getting a runaround and and sleeping us in limbo. Um, each month on what we're supposed to do the next month, and depending on what that looks like, makes that extremely difficult.
I don't think the council's going to throw you out on your head in a day, but also we've discussed up here.
Now, they have support on this council, and we're not looking to throw you out. But also consider you have a fairly new council who hasn't done with any of these leases that are coming up. And that was just after July. This is August. So I understand you're in limbo, and like, that's the first thing I told you. I hate for you to be in limbo. We also know other aspects that have you in limbo right now. So you do have support. I will publicly say you have support on this council. But we have to be consistent with all of our leases. We can't pro- propose something to you that we're not going to propose to the chamber or to the Boys and Girls Club or to the senior center. And all of those leases are coming up, if I'm not mistaken.
They're all up.
So, and right now, as you see, we're not in agreeance right now. So in the numbers that we have, I'm just being totally transparent. The numbers that we have, I don't think y'all can afford. And that'd be unfair to you and to that museum.
And I agree, and I, I just want to, I wanted to toss out where I, I feel like, you know, if this was going to be something that was evaluated and maybe should have done earlier before leases were up. And and to give it, and if you look at, and and I, I.
I'll speak to that, McKenzie. This, this board cannot, it runs the term limits. So what would have happened if the old board, say if that, if that would have gone past July one, when these guys took office, and women? Um, what would have happened is your lease would have immediately became voidable. So that's why the last group made that lease and at the end of June, because you would have really have been in limbo then. Because then you could have had a lease thinking that you're, you're solid. You could think you have two or three left, years left. But it's state law when this new group came in and took office, they could have made a motion at any, any time to to say that that void, that lease is completely voidable because you can't bind one term to another. And so that's why that decision was made. So I think what's happened here is that you've got, if you count Ms. Davis, you've got five new members up here that are thrown into, I think this is your first budget round, right? So five new people, two new members going into to budgets, trying to figure all this out. So I don't think anybody has purposely neglected something. I think they're trying to figure out budgets so that they can move on to other city ob- ob- city obstacles. And knowing that you guys have a solid month-to-month lease, because that's what happens. You go by the term of how, how your lease is, and yours is month-to-month.
I want to say I really appreciate you stating that and communicating that, because that's not an understanding that I had whatsoever. Um, that, you know, from my perspective is what I was saying on, you know, at lease renewal, then we're discussing what that looks like or potential and, you know, waiting on the city to get a lease, but then, you know, here's an idea, here's a proposal or something to look at. But, um, that hasn't been explained yet. So definitely appreciated.
Which is, has been done historically. So Mayor, do you have an individual set to do a fair market value of which buildings?
We can call him and see if he's still interested in doing after that phone call he received.
Which buildings are that talking?
Do what?
As many.
You can do as many as you want.
They're, you're looking, you're looking probably around two thousand dollars a pop, so.
We're going to spend the money and still give it away. Let's be honest. We need to release.
Well, yeah.
We've spent two thousand dollars together, so we're going to have the six dollars a square foot. If that's what they want.
What's the council in terms of reading, like? Again, I don't want to be in the business of being a landlord over retail, because with that becomes, it's a high expense. There's a lot of wear and tear. So if it's just to use the basis, I don't want to waste that two thousand dollars.
As far as using it as a, that's why we're wanting to use the comps to kind of get an idea. After looking at the comps, you may just agree or may agree. I think that building's worth more than five dollars a square foot.
So we're using the comps from across the street?
Across the street.
So are we not?
Do you think five dollars is a fair value, fair market value?
This was stated, hey, this was stated before your turn, but we've never gone for those two buildings in fair, fair market. I don't want to be in the business of getting into retail.
And I think historically, we've made bad deals on these buildings, and that's not shown to you and you and Josh, but we're, if we're going to give our tax dollars an in-kind, this is an in-kind donation. I don't know if you understand that.
Based on what they're, based on what.
Based on the comps.
The comps from.
You know, Mr. Rizzo, can you order us that and we'll give it away, sir?
I mean, with the comps or with.
So upstairs is about forty-one hundred square feet currently. So if they're going to rent upstairs, figure forty-one hundred square feet, now that's what the lease you, you can come up with, that's the price you want.
And then if you also look at it, it's two leases in one. So do we agree to let them stay in the west and then possibly rent out the east side of it?
Orderism is not being known.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And if we're in limbo with.
But I don't know if that's in the, I don't, I don't know.
Mr. President, Mr. President. Mr. DeSalvo has been trying to say something for the past one minute.
If you want, we'll go ahead, we'll start with Ms. Morton and work our way down the line, get everything out and then.
I, I think that we're missing the value of what Alice Mosley brings to our town. We're not in the, we're not, you know, we're not in the business of running a business. We're in the business of providing service to our community. And it's, um, I very, very much want to see Alice Mosley stay. It's a beacon, it's a voice, it promotes something that nothing else in this town promotes. We can point to a museum, and it's quite delightful.
And what else are you going to put in that search?
Exactly. And, uh, you know, so I'm, that's where I am.
Um, as I publicly said, I am in support of Alice Mosley Museum. I do want them to stay. Um, the only problem I had with with the lease was primarily there's, you can, if you look at how the depot's laid out, you can almost chop it up in four sections. So do they need the whole top floor? Do they need just stuff where the art is? How do we go from with tourism? That's my concern. It's not necessarily to push y'all out or not to renew a lease. It's just the little specific pieces of it. Um, I also am in favor of having like a gift shop and a welcome center there. It works for us. Each one of us, when we had our platform, said we was going to keep the small town charm. To me, that's a part of it. Um, where else do we go to get our history in Bay St. Louis? Where is that displayed? Where do our artists, how many houses do they have to display their local arts? So we're in, I'm in favor. I'm not going to speak on myself. I'm in favor. But there's just some details of it that I would like to explore.
Yeah, and and the, I can't say much better than AT and Delva at the moment. I mean, again, um, Alice Mosley's been a mainstay. I, I mean, it put things in perspective with my kids have gone there from their school and toured it. Shame on me. I had no idea when they came back and and explained to me what they, they toured there. It's pretty enlightening. Um, but again, I keep going back to, we have tried and we have failed in terms of giving or or going out for FMV and having retail space occupy our government buildings, which was really predicated on the decision for the chamber to be in the current situation there and at the old city hall. We have tried and failed in terms of retail spaces going in that building. And I like to add, if we, you know, I, I don't know where Alice Mosley is on this, um, but if we keep going in limbo, it's my understanding if, if it goes unoccupied, um, then we get ourselves in another situation where, you know, if a storm comes and what we can get from a standpoint, God forbid that someone has that building, and from a FEMA re-impression standpoint, I believe that was something that came up a while back as well. But again, um, I don't want to be in the business of competing with retail spaces that are on the same area. And I don't want to be in the business as government running retail space. Um, and again, it's, it's been a mainstay in our community. Couldn't say it better than Nancy and Fella. So I agree with them, support, support Alice Mosley staying in that spot.
And I'll, I'll go ahead and make a couple of my points. I just want everyone to know, I'm not against giving a discounted rate to Alice Mosley. What I'm against is us not treating that as an in-kind donation, because that's what it is on the face value of it. So I would like to sit down so we can put a dollar value on that. And if we're going to consider that an in-kind, which I see it that way. I don't know how the others see it. I don't. But to me, I see it as in-kind. I want to see the financials. I want to see the audits, and then that'll be something to move forward with as well. Uh, the second thing I do want to say, you'll have first right, if it's up to me and I think some of these others, you'll have the first right, uh, to refuse it if it doesn't work out. So we're not just going to tell you, hey, it's time for you to go. Um, you, that is, to me, I'll make sure that happens as to the fullest of my ability. Um, the next thing I want to kind of bring up is you need to know where do we go from here? I think it would be very wise of this council to have a budget workshop and invite Alice Mosley, invite tourism, invite the chamber, invite Boys and Girls Club, invite all of the nonprofits that are all of these buildings where the lease is up. Sit down and let's have a discussion about, one, what we would like as a council, what we would like to do with it. Sit down and let's have a discussion about, one, what we would like as a council, what we would like to do with it. And then turn around and say, hey, look, these are gonna be our rates. We feel like this is a discounted rate. Which, I mean, I agree, we should, we should help nonprofits. I know some people are against helping nonprofits, but uh, I do think fundamentally this is an in-kind donation. So I'm gonna keep beating that point up. Um, and I think we should have a workshop and sit down and address all these leases at one time, pack it up and send it back. But we're not gonna sit, I don't want you to think we're here to try to, because I think you do a great job. Saw an amazing Facebook post about you today. Nobody can deny you do a lot in this community. So I'm not, this vote isn't, for me, it isn't against Mackenzie Norrington. It is against the concept of fundamentally what this lease is about, obviously how I view it. I'm only one vote, but that's all I feel.
So, um, apologize for my voice that goes in and out. Um, when you bring the audit papers and the financials and that that we're requesting, I'd like an explanation of some of the numbers that have been posted with Alice Mosley Museum. Uh, one of them was that there's been 806,000 people that have attended. How do y'all log that?
Uh, the visitor center, we have, um, vast majority of people. We have sign-in sheet. Um, and also there's along with our bus tours and then there's a amount of people that go upstairs.
Because just doing the math and it was based on 17 years, that would be over 130 people a day.
That wasn't a number I stated. Um, I would have to look at exactly where that came from, to be completely honest.
Okay.
But if you have two tour buses, that's a hun- over 130.
Every day. I did it for 364 days for 17 years. That's what was posted. That's every day.
Seven days a week.
That would have to be field trips. That would be five classes, visiting per day. It was on Facebook and someone sent it to me.
Okay.
Actually the guy.
I'm not sure where it went.
Okay. So also, if you could post how many field trips you actually have, which schools in the area?
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. These are no new programs. We're trying to reintroduce.
So.
On that, currently we don't, um, we're trying to bring all that back in. And that's what was with that proposal on the part two and having an expansive, um, area to try and provide different classes and for field trips and activities.
And the only other is, um, it was listed 647,000 in grants. So if you could just get a breakdown of how that was actually, I mean, not detailed fatigue.
Where did that money go?
Yeah. These were numbers that I had or gave to y'all that I'm, I'm not sure where those numbers came from, but I'm more than happy to look into them.
I can, I can give you that.
I can just tell you what I, I know and, and what I've looked into, but I'm happy to look into it.
And the only other question is Mopar Day in the Bay. How is that connected to the Mosley Museum? I see that advertised also.
Um, we're, in part, I think in the past it's been a sponsor, um, and Alice Mosley has helped set up as far as, um, they do different raffles that help support the foundation. Uh, Alice Mosley doesn't pay to be sponsored with, um, Mopar in the Bay, but more so Mopar in the Bay kinda sponsored Alice Mosley to allow it to be there to, um, do some fundraising, is my understanding from the past. So, again, I'm just going off of what I know. Um, cause I'm, you know, I just started there in June. So I would have to look back to give you the exact facts.
I kinda have to agree with Mr. Bradford, you know, it's in kind. We get cost and other organizations come up here who won't give them a community center for one night. But yeah, we're gonna sit here and give a big discounted rate on the lease and not even think about it, you know? So I think we need to be fair. If we're gonna do in cons, we need to do in cons. If we're not, we're not, you know? We're very selective and we, this may be very passionate to one person, okay, but not another person. So the problem is we get personal feelings in here all the time and we don't stay consistent. So that's why I think Jordan's got the best idea and I've said it, you know, Boys and Girl Club, senior citizen building. Those things help wavelength also in other cities. But it seems like Bay St. Louis is the big brother and sister for everybody in the community and pays all the bills for everybody.
Well, they're the seat, they're the seat of the county.
I'm sorry?
Well, they are the seat of the county. That's.
What's that?
The, Bay, Bay St. Louis is the, is the seat of the county. I mean, so that's.
But also the lowest middle place in Hancock County. And we don't, we're not raising taxes. So eventually we gotta figure out how much money to spend on all these buildings. Do we wanna keep losing that much money every year? Do we wanna raise taxes to offset that? Will we be giving away in kind donations? How do we wanna cover it? Inflation went up on the city too. We, we went down two mills the last four years in taxes.
And, and I, again, I do, I do understand numbers and I do understand crunching numbers. I'm a, I'm a big spreadsheet girl, 100%. But I think more of what I'm asking or bringing up is the importance that it brings to our community. And what that means for the people that live here and the people that come to visit us, what that looks like.
And I agree, but somebody else might have a totally different charity. They think it's the best thing ever. And you may think this is better and I'm not saying which one's better. I'm just saying everybody has a different personal belief, you know?
Yeah, and I agree, but your reference point was on one night compared to, you know, a, a daily thing.
Well, that was just a reference of in kind donations that some council members have been against every time, but are for now. So it's all in beliefs.
Well, Josh, last time we checked, we do have city buildings that we give a decreased rate to for nonprofits, right? Community home. Right. Um, and again, uh, no, I'll let y'all finish. I don't need to take anything.
And that's not trying to steal, that's just stating facts that we've sat here in costume, we've been to the casinos that are community center because we didn't wanna give it to them really. It was always a hassle when they came up here and had to beg for it and, and get grilled. I mean, you know, so it was, they moved their event. So we just gotta be consistent. We gotta figure out what's important to everybody. Do I think it's important? Yes, I do. I supported it last time. I think some of your comments was very unfair in your opening statement. I think we do have five new council members who was working on budget. I think it was told that, give us time, let us work through this. We're gonna get to it. And, and you just keep pushing it. And I think that it's not that we're against it. You do have month-to-month. You are there for now. But I felt the comments were very unfair, to be honest, and very unappreciative of what y'all do get, to be quite honest.
Well, I, I do wanna say that I, you know, when Heather explained it, um, that, that my opening statement was my perspective on, on how I felt and the communication on that and I, I really respected the way that she explained it to me. I, I'm just was being honest in that my opening statement was, you know, my process in short and how it made me feel and it being kind of a runaround and that, that's not appreciated on my end.
I was sat here and paid my personal money for the depot grounds for the event you want, cause I believed in it, you know? And some people wouldn't even give that away to you. So let's really think about what I'm saying when I say that. Very inconsistent that we couldn't give you $200 in depot grounds for Wednesday nights. We could just give this away. I think they could evaluate everything. Um, you know, so that's my stance. So I'm the no for tonight. Cause I think we need to look at everybody's lease, not just yours. Look at everybody's cost, what it costs to city to operate the building because taxpayers' money. So if we're gonna be consistent and fair, look at everybody and let's say, all right, we can't keep that. When it comes to evaluation, I don't think we should spend the money because the businesses next door are paying that current rate that was presented to us. So that's not a myth. That's a fact of what they get. I own rental properties. I get $6 a square foot for duplexes in Mesa Park. I get $8 a square foot for retail behind my diamonds. I mean, so the $5 a square foot is way too low and upping into that value, you know, so.
Ms. Mackenzie, I like to kinda think, keep things simple. Um, do you own, do you own a car?
Uh.
An automobile?
Technically the bank owns it. I'm paying on it.
Okay. And so did you purchase it from a dealership or did you buy it from an individual?
Uh, dealership.
Okay. So when you went into the dealership and found your car, did you bring them a contract and say, this is how much I wanna pay for this car and this is how much I think this car's worth? Or did they give you a contract and say, this is what you're gonna pay for this?
It was negotiated.
That's right, exactly.
Yeah.
And the same thing if you, if you're renting or whatever.
They didn't have a price on the car, so I, I brought what I thought was appropriate as an offer or a proposal.
But what I find inappropriate is that a lease seed would present a lease or with a contract and say, this is what I want you to do. You, you understand?
No, and I, again, I agree. It was more so about the terms or, you know, my update. I tried to make it easier is, is what I did, not in necessarily like a formal thought. It was about the term, the terms of it of what was being updated.
I'm speaking, I'm speaking. Thank you. It made it more complicated, okay, because trying to force something to the council is not gonna be looked at in a favorable light, just to be honest with you. Um, we all won't like the museum. There's nothing wrong with the museum. I know, I think the city spends almost $50,000 keeping the door open. So when I hear that the museum is free, there's nothing free. Nothing's free. And when I hear figures like 647,000 dollars and, uh, 801,000 visitors, and I look at those stats and I just shake my head. I said, there's just no way.
And, and the numbers that I provided are, are ones that I, I have, I have fact-checked. Um, the numbers that you're stating right now, I, I don't know. I don't, I don't have.
We'll send them to you.
Okay, I'd be happy to look into it.
So, um, I agree with Mr. Bradford. And I wholeheartedly would say no to this contract.
Jordan, can I, yeah, yeah, before, they can, we got, uh, reset. What I wanna kinda do is clear up the communication and what's gonna happen going forward. So we're not, we're not getting a lease every week with a new proposal. Is there any way we can communicate that?
Just a couple of things. Mackenzie did approach or contact me back in July. Um, at that time I did respond and say, there's no reason to meet right now. We're in a budget workshop meeting. You guys are meeting weekly between your city council meetings and your budget meetings. I said, you're month-to-month, everything's good. When we get taxes budget, we'll get into that. At the budget workshops, if y'all remember, I recommended to y'all to leave your lease income, the rental income level. Sorry about that. I'm, that building, leave it, and that way y'all can have a workshop or something to deal with your leases. And if you wanna charge more, you can charge more and you'll just make more money in your budget. But keep your revenue level as you address your budget concerns. Um, when we talk about Fair Walker Value or comps, you know, I did comment to y'all that I would approach current brokers and realtors as well as people who own rental, rental properties to get some comps. I never said I was gonna try to hire an appraisal, because if y'all are gonna keep it where it's a donation, there's no reason to spend $1,800. That's the entire rental income you got last year of this building. So, I mean, I think y'all have to kinda direct that. That's why the mayor was gonna put her on the agenda. Say, all right, do y'all want this or not? You wanna spend the money or not? And again, if you're gonna keep it with Alice Mosley or any nonprofit and it's a donation, then don't waste the money. Would be my recommendation. Um, you also heard a developer tonight who quoted what he was gonna be getting rent on Dunbar at night.
Right.
And why he couldn't build more at his rates and they were obviously different. Um, also highly recommend it, the city should write the lease, our city attorney should write the lease. That lease should be consistent amongst all our properties. Maybe a little point in language depending on property or the owner who will be in there. Uh, but overall, the language of the lease should be standard that the council approves. Um, and finally, I'm just reminding y'all, we have an existing lease with tourism on the top part of that building. We have not received a letter of termination or anything else from them that's formal. We've had some discussions, but there is no formal. Right now, we have a lease in place month-to-month with tourism. There's just some things to think about.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Chris. While you're here, uh, I guess, like, we could cover the, the reasoning for sending a lease proposal for both sides. There's, uh, cause I know you're also the director with tourism. Is there, is that, have you seen them go away? Is there an update that you can give us on that?
There is, um, with that, again, it's, it was a proposal, um, for Alice Mosley. And what I tried to do without trying to, I guess, muddy the waters with kind of both, cause I know I'm director of both and it can become a little confusing on, on, in explaining everything at once. So I just wanted to talk about Alice Mosley and that and presenting lease or the term kind of options um, for our current space and then for potential as well. Um, but for tourism, I would, I would like to wait to, to speak more on it another time, but.
Uh, the reason I say is that I think the motion was for approving both sides. So if this were to carry through, now we just evicted tourism, which I think is responsible for bringing a lot of those tourism buses, which you've done a great job.
Well, on tourism's end, um, as of right now, um, we have two ladies that work downstairs in our visitor center. Upstairs in the, uh, tourism office, it's a lot of space. Uh, if you guys haven't ever been up there, it's a lot of desks. Um, it's an amazing space. I absolutely love it. But it's just me and, um, is that space best utilized for just my office? No? No. Uh, and so that's why the proposal was presented, um, as well for the Alice Mosley, cause there's discussion there. So, you know, I can, I can touch more on this, but I mean, I think it's better left to another time, you know, just trying not to make it as confusing.
If I might, um, the tourism part, the office part upstairs was a possible separate lease, right? That's not included with Alice Mosley.
Yeah, um, in this proposal, listen, uh, there was like A and B. A was the current area. B was the additional upstairs area, um, with two different start dates as far as lease going with the next month. Um, again, it was just for the current space, you know, just trying to give you all an overview on the change of those terms. Um, now understanding from what Heather told me on, you know, how this really works with the new board, I was not aware of that. I just could tell you from my perspective of what that looks like, but, um, the, uh, but with the museum, it was looking at whether to update it or not or in possibly expanding and looking at these, um, at these programs and uh, speaking tourism at a later date, you know, of potential there. And I know tourism would also is, you know, an in-kind donation on, on that end. So putting a proposal with some dollar signs, um, you know, as options of, of what that looked like. And, um, again, I want y'all to know how much I hate being here. I really hate it. I'm a nervous wreck, but, um, I also have, I have a board that I have to answer to. So, you know, I'm not trying to be a bully. I'm not trying to push anything, but you have to understand where I, I have to answer that same board as well. You know, and they're like, what's going on with the lease? What are we doing moving forward? Hey, let's look at your strategic plan. Where are we on this? And I'm like, well, uh, you know, it's getting pushed back each month. So again, I'm, I'm not trying to be a jerk. It's just a little bit of perspective on, on, you know, what I'm working with on my end as well.
Completely understand though.
Now, with the possibility of a budget workshop, is that something, you know, we can set a date at maybe, at our next meeting? Cause we obviously have a lot of people here passionate about Alice Mosley. We're gonna have a lot of people passionate about Boys and Girls Club. A lot of people passionate about the chamber coming out. Do we need to separate those workshops, do them all at one?
No, 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 please separate them.
And so, separate, I, I guess, my thing is going forward, if we can get an idea of dates when we'll have those budget workshops.
We can get all the financials ahead of time, where everybody can get them, instead of waiting to that night to get them. You know, that, that's a big help, um. And I think you probably have to alternate hours, maybe a half hour here or there with each group because they're not gonna fit in here all at once unless you're gonna go to community center.
Right.
How are you paying the values of each building?
What's that?
How are you paying the values of each building? Are we doing just comps like we did for this?
Okay, I'll, I'll speak to that.
How we what?
So how are you getting the comps? So, and, and that really is a decision for you guys as a city council to make. Because, so what appraisers do is they reach out and they look at the exact same comps that we did and they do give you an official appraisal. Um, it really depends on if that's something that you want. Because there's tons of information that is out there that is available, that was presented to you guys. Um, if you want to go get a fair market, if you wanna go pay the 1,800 to $2,000 on each property, that, that's fine. If you want to, um, go the route that you're relying on your local realtors and your, not Realtor.com, but similar where people have these open leases, they, I mean, they have the square footage out there that's available. You can use that because we are in, as we've discussed a ton of times, um, all nonprofits are not created equal. Some you are allowed to donate money to in the state of Mississippi. Um, this falls in a special category because you are allowed to lease surplus property. So that is what you are considering. This, you are considering the property that, that you're leasing, surplus property that is no longer needed for use by the city of Bay St. Louis. And you are allowed to enter into these agreements with these nonprofits. Um, but again, that is a decision for you guys to direct the administration. If you wanna go out and spend 10 grand on appraisals, by all means, do it. Nothing is stopping you from doing that other than having to come up with $10,000 that, you know, the Alice Mosley Museum could probably use in their own coffers if you wanted to spend 10.
Nothing is stopping you from doing that other than having to come up with ten thousand dollars that, you know, the Alice Mosley Museum could probably use in their own coffers if you wanted to spend ten thousand dollars. Or you can rely on comps. But we just need a clear understanding, and I say we, we, the administration needs a clear understanding as to what information that, that you all want.
My personal opinion is if they're getting that for rent next door, that's going to be the going rate of rent. I mean.
We're going to use that for all buildings, yeah? We're going to look at all buildings and saying what's, what's being in that vicinity? What's, what's going to be the?
Well, if they're getting it three hundred foot from across the street, that's going to be the going in that.
Okay, okay, but we've got, we, I've heard consistency a lot. So, let's be consistent, let's go to other areas. And we'll determine what that value is based on. Is there, is there a proximity do you have in mind?
Yeah, I mean, if it's the, uh, Chambers ad?
Yeah.
When you look at the downtown area, if it's where they're at and you look at what the depot district.
You gotta look, if you gotta, if you gotta evaluate everything, you have to see what's around it. You know, where the Chambers act in a residential neighborhood.
Well, then, right on the downtown area where there's a merchant happening there.
But if it's a residential neighborhood that.
So, we're not anything the same.
I didn't say that.
But wait, hold on, there's, there, hold on. Here's another thing y'all, I think y'all are missing my point. The, the point is, is that, uh, the question you have to also consider is are you going to charge fair market value? What is the consensus? Because if you're going to charge, I mean, those, those appraisals are only worth, so what does it matter? If it's worth fifty dollars a square foot, if you're not going to do it, it, as Jordan said, it's an in-kind donation. So, that is the part that you're considering is really what amount of money or what amount of city value are you willing to give as an in, in-kind donation? Because that's, that's what it, it will ultimately be and what are you getting in, in return? I mean, that's, that's the formula that you're figuring out and, you know, each entity is very different at what they do and who they serve. And they are all looked at separately.
Have we done? Have we done that in the past, uh, measured the in-kind donation of what the city is giving?
They should have.
Why is this new now?
I think it was done at Mosley as an in-kind donation.
Well, it's, it's all done as in-kind. So, it's, it's, these are all in-kind donations. That's what you were do, that's what the law says. You can, you can donate to a nonprofit. So, you are, the law allows you to donate to a nonprofit. The law allows you, just say if I wanted to have Heather's car washing service and I wanted to come rent the depot and I wanted to start washing cars while people ride the Amtrak. You can't just come out and say, oh, here you go. You, there are certain ways that you can lease to a private entity. You have to either seek an appraisal, you go through the fair market value, that's where the term comes from from that. Or you can, um, submit proposals. You can open it up and say, hey, everybody submitted a pro, submit a proposal and tell me how much you're willing to pay for this. Um, or you can listen with a realtor. So, those are kind of three different ways that the law allows. So, the way this is all comes up is different. If I remember going back with the Chamber building, I think they actually went out for RFPs on that building twice. And the last, um, who, there was a, there was a, uh, education, something that wanted to pay, I think, three hundred dollars a month for it. There was a couple of restaurants that looked at it for multiple reasons, ended up backing out. One of which actually came to the terms, I think the proposal was six or seven hundred dollars a month. And actually never executed a lease because I think the owner figured out she couldn't, um, her specialty was fried food and she couldn't fry, fry food. That building wasn't capable of doing that. So, that's, you know, that's another process to go about. That way you're not in the realm of fair market value. Some of my clients that, that do this want to know what the fair market value is because they want to see it. Some of it know they're not going to get fair market value, so they go through this proposal process. So, I guess, long story to answer your question, is there's multiple different areas or multiple different sections of this law that allows you to lease property in separate ways. So, there's different ways you can go about doing it. It's up to you as to how you go about doing it. I think if you even read their old lease, it, it states specifically in that, that you're don't, that it is a donation. So, the in-kind thing's never, never new. That's what, that's what they've been doing. It's just maybe nobody stressed that it was an in-kind donation, but that's always been what it, what it is for the Alice Mosley.
And I don't think anyone's against the in-kind part here, so, but on that token, if we went out for RFP and somebody comes in and says, hey, we want to give you thirty dollars a square foot, then, I mean, that'd be something we would have to consider. So, I don't want to, I would like to use the comps if that's a possibility. But I think we have fair comps for where the depot is currently. And I think we could easily get comps for the Chamber building. And are going to get comps for, I think it's going to be Boys and Girls Club. But, uh, I think when you look at Second Street, some of the stuff coming in that way, you might be able to get some comparisons to the Chamber. But, uh, my thing is I want to be consistent with if we're giving donations monetary or in kind, getting financial statements that's going to be for Chamber, Boys and Girls Club, cost of anybody. I want to be consistent for the next four years on what we're doing with that.
We're not going to get any grants for upkeep on the building month by month.
Well, that's, we just put about a million dollars into it and the city can get other grants also and through historical and different things. But, um, and I was just saying earlier, tonight's vote is not ending their lease. It's not just renewing and signing a new four, three, four-year lease. It's just saying, we want time to look at it, we want to evaluate everybody's lease and come up with a strategy for the next four years for all of city buildings moving forward. Because it, it's been inconsistent over the years and need to look at it and see who probably spending two mils a taxpayer's money to give buildings away right now.
Right.
Between all the buildings we're giving away, so.
But I think we also has those numbers for, for resale of costs of these buildings, so.
And just because of this discussion, I'm, I'm just curious, is, it, does it have to be a four-year lease for all of these buildings? Or can it be smaller leases? Just out of curiosity. It can be smaller leases, but then you'll have to go through this every year, so. Yeah. No, I understand, but I mean, just, yeah, loo, looking forward and this is just an idea I'm tossing out there is, if it's every four years and you're looking at a new council that maybe, you know, thinking of best practice of, uh, you know, renewing the three month of, you know, where it's at. So, then it's not limbo, but then you have kind of a timeframe, so you're looking at, you know. Council before, I know, there's lots of options, but, you know, just, uh, where it gives that window of time of what that maybe looks like or of some sort. Or maybe, you know, best practice of looking at that fair market value last year before a new council. I don't know, just tossing that out there.
But also while y'all are in limbo, we're not getting this six hundred and forty-five dollars either. So, if we are in limbo for another two, three months, we're still getting that bottom dollar. So, that's something we need to consider because, like she said, it's two leases presented to us. So, just keep that in mind as well because we are losing money as long as they're in a month to month.
Yeah, so I, I think if there is one lease move on priority, it would be Alice Mosley because of that. Not, I mean, for years they can, also the cities, but, um, I think, going back to the point, I think we need to set some budget workshops or, or set some workshops to where the public has an opportunity to hear. And, uh, we can work through it from there. I don't know if we want to vote this motion or if we want to change it and table it. As far as voting, any other discussion?
No. What's the motion?
The motion was to approve the Alice Mosley lease proposal at the Bay St. Louis Strength Depot. The motion was moved by Councilwoman Moynihan and second by Councilwoman Lewis. So, if there is no any, uh, other discussion of, of the motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Nay, motion fails for, for the. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, project updates, the engineers report.
Charlie, you may want to take a thirty-second recess just to let some of these votes clear the room, if they would choose.
Thank you, Michael. We'll go ahead and work it out.
Alex, it's fine. Okay? See you next time.
Just, just for the record, Councilman Smith and everybody. All right, engineers report.
Okay, now, we do have three action items tonight. I guess we start with sixteen. So, this is a summary change order basically for the Sunset Sewer Project. And, and I guess to explain that, so what we do at the end of a, a project, a unit price contract like this is we have some overruns, we have some underruns. We just zero everything out so that there's no additional work required. So, this is closing out that project. Uh, we are coming in about ninety-five hundred dollars below the, the construction budget on that one. So, we did come in, you know, slight, slightly below. But this is just a paperwork type scenario to, um.
Jason, just to make sure.
Yeah, this is a summary change order, yeah.
Yeah, so what happens on projects like these that are unit priced, everything is bid based off of estimate. So, you have a bid sheet and it's so many yards of this at this price and it's all based off of an estimate that Jason provides. And that's how the award is given when they, they submit their, their bids. And then at the end, we go in and, and shore up actuals. Got a decent explanation there, Jason?
Jason, only thing I got on that is we still having trouble a little bit on that one yard decision.
I understand that.
So, my, you know, I don't want folks to get that straightened out.
Okay. Did, did Matt with that property owner multiple times? Did he even sign off on it the last time they were there, so?
I'll give, I've had a phone call a couple of times in the past week about, you know, still washing out everything.
Uh, one of the properties between Highland and Esalen. And the grant, grants establishment outside. Let's get together on that and, and we'll look at it next meeting about closing out that, all right? Yeah, that's fine, we can do that. We still have the punch list open, so we haven't finalized that yet. This is just a change order to get all the quantities zeroed out with what this item is.
Yeah, so this is just coming out.
Just hitting to close the project out then.
No, this is just to get all the quantities of the day. Yeah, with actuals.
Long as we're not closing the project.
Right.
Okay.
So, we do ask for a motion to approve that change order.
I'll call for a motion to approve summary change order to adjust final quantities for the Sunset, the Dunbar Sewer Improvements Project. Do I have a motion?
Moynihan motions.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Both a motion.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carried seven zero.
Thank you for that. All right, so the next item is seventeen. Uh, we did, we did receive bids on what we're calling, I guess, phase three of the RPR citywide sewer improvements project. This is a go for all the lift stations, I think there's forty-three lift stations. Evaluate those lift stations, see if there's any components that need to be replaced, any pumps that are failing, any impellers that are failing. Clean out all the lift stations, remove all the grit, sand the debris, all the nasty stuff. And that's just going to help the pumps operate more efficiently. So, we received bids a couple of weeks ago and we, we have, uh, Bay Motor Winding was the low bidder. Let me see.
They was all over the board, though, wasn't they?
They were all over the place, yeah, so.
Oh, right. Jason, this is excessive?
Yeah, it really was. And we also included some repairs. So, we have pressure gauges that are going to be replaced, check valves that'll be replaced, if any pumps need to be rewound or rebuilt, all those pay items are included in this.
Okay, so that's not just that.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, the, the bid tabulation is, that's all the pay items that are included in it.
And this is similar to Wayland did, correct?
Similar to Wayland, except we did the same one at Wayland, but we added a lot of other pay items to this.
And this is covered in RPR?
Covered in RPR, a hundred percent. Yeah, we did have three bids, uh, the low bid by Bay Motor was seven hundred and fifty-two thousand. Uh, second low was one point four six million and the high bidder was two point two seven million. So, um, quack the spread on this, but we are recommending Bay Motor on this project.
Make motion.
I have a motion from Councilman DeSalvo to approve the engineer's recommendation to award the contract to Bay Motor Winding for the Bay St. Louis Lift Station Assessments Rehabilitation. An SCADA installation project and to utilo, and to authorize the mayor to execute all construction documents. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second with Councilman Lewis. Any discussion? Both a motion.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Uh, seven zero, motion carried seven zero.
Thank you for that. So, the final action item is eighteen tonight. This is a project that's been a long time coming. It's the Harbor Dredging Project. This is from Hurricane Zeta. Uh, we finally did get approval from MEMA for the additional cost. We received bids on this on, uh, April fifteenth. And we did get five bids on this project. Uh, they came in above the FEMA cost estimate, so we had to go back to FEMA to get those costs approved. Um, the low bidder on this was Joe J. E. Tally, uh, from Pascagoula. Their bid was five hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. And we have talked to them several times. They have agreed to extend their bid even though they, the bids were submitted in April. So, we did get the go-ahead this week, uh, from MEMA to award this project with the additional cost. So, we're asking authorization to award.
And Jason, you got to get, I mean, in terms of evaluation and the value work, they've done this?
We've worked with them before, yeah, they're marine contractors, so we've worked with them before.
Well, I'll entertain a motion to accept the engineer's recommendation to award the contract to J. E. Tally Construction, Inc. For the Bay St. Louis Municipal Harbor Dredging Projects and to authorize the mayor to execute all construction documents.
And can we also make sure Caitlin that that motion includes that J. E. Tally was the lowest and best and also the amount of the contract?
Motion, Smith.
Do I have a second?
Moynihan seconds.
Do, uh, any discussion? Both a motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Can we also make sure?
Uh, motion carried seven zero.
Make sure the same information is in the, um, Bay Motor Winding too. I think it's in your supplemental stuff, but Caitlin, just make sure that's put in the actual motions.
Before we move on to the city clerk's report, I do realize, uh, under council, uh, business, I did give the council the opportunity for any new council business. They want to back up to that and see if anyone had anything possible. We'll move on to the city clerk's report.
Yeah, my, Mike or Mike Reza, it's something we can do. I know we're getting a lot of requests on the, uh, just a notification or something with debris pickup. I know a lot of times I'll just pass and try to put in a ticket and I try to tell the resident, but sometimes they just aren't aware of it. Is there anything we can do just to kind of do a, you know, campaign, hey, look, you know, something on the city website? I mean, I credit, again, Coastal, when I put one in, or they, they get it picked up quick. But it seems like a lot of residents don't realize, they just assume it gets picked up in the trash and they're supposed to get it another time, but.
It's every other week when they come down, we need to get that maybe on the schedule, you know, on a. Have a dive to see how, when they come, but also we can check with them too about, you know, pinning it maybe better.
Yeah, we have the links on the website on the departments for garbage, so there is some. What I'm hearing though is more of a press release or a push. We're just adding a link.
More of awareness, yeah.
They can put a message on the utility bill. But also it comes every two weeks. But I think we could do a, a Facebook push and get a press release for, uh, Seacoast.
And I think the only caveat to that too is if somebody, because I had a call last, last week about, they had, they had owned property also, they had a house, had owned property next to it. They don't want all that debris in front of their house, it's been a lot. And then sometimes in coastal defense, they don't realize that's somebody that actually claims for service or not. Again, Darren has mediated that and got that picked up really quick.
They're very good about it.
Yeah, they are, but it just, but it was just they about residents, like, I've been calling about it, can't really get it. So, again, just put some kind of awareness out there.
Definitely push something out.
I mean, I'm sure they can.
And also this FYI, on our website, you hit garbage, it'll take you, where you can request a pickup, request a can. You missed a pickup, if you want to report they didn't pick up your garbage today, they missed you. And all those links go right to their website, so they get it immediately. But we can do a Facebook push and some other campaign stuff. That's easy.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I did have one thing on the buyer drive sidewalks. I know I've talked to everyone about it, I really missed my opportunity with Jason. Especially on the corner of Carroll and Buyer, that drain is, if they don't fix it pretty quickly, it's going to wash out.
That's on that, yeah.
It's starting to corrode out. And I, I know Jason's probably aware of it, but just wanted to bring that and then.
Also some of the patch job they did on the asphalt, no?
What you sent me today, I thought.
Right.
Yeah, I know it's.
I had one thing, Mr. President, um, the no-wake zone, can we get that back on the agenda the next meeting or two? I know JD's here. I know we've got to do a public hearing and all that stuff and we pushed it off at the new council and budgeting, but I got people that are going to bother still.
JD, we, we see a set of public hearing, right?
We did set a public hearing, um, and so we can do that, you know, next meeting, set a public hearing, have a public hearing. And, um, we can do that either at the city council meeting, there's a following one or, or not, or we can give it at a separate time.
Okay, well, we'll get back to us too.
Thank you.
Yeah, let, let's set, let's set it against five o'clock for our next meeting.
Josh, do we have?
You have to set it here, right? So, the next meeting.
I know, but I'm saying, yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm informing, I mean, marine, I mean, does that, that does fall in our jurisdiction, right? We don't, we've been other entities.
Yes, and what we have to do is we have to have a public. Yes, and what we have to do is, we have to have a public hearing, and then we have to send it to DMR, and they have the public hearing.
Yeah, JD's been working with the NLR now for a few months to, to get this, for, for you guys.
We just pushed it off because everything going on with the actions.
It's to, to bait no-wake zones out, probably words five and words six.
For, for the reference, JD dropped the ball.
And, and that's in the.
Definitely not, definitely not.
Not on parent's bus, you ain't in the.
Okay, anything else? Everyone listening? All right, city clerk's report?
Yeah, just a motion to approve a docket of claims twenty-five dash oh-four-one dated August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, in the amount of one million, eight thousand, seven dollars and sixteen cent. I didn't receive any calls on it. Notice there's probably several large payments for contractors and other normal stuff, or garbage.
Do, I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
She's got one there for help.
I'll second.
She's good.
Davis second.
Second by Councilwoman Davis. Any discussion? Vote the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carried seven zero.
The second one is our, uh, docket of claims twenty-five dash oh-four-three special dated August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, in the amount of two thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars and sixteen cent. We received our credit card bill that had been delayed and it yielded interest. We're just trying to get it paid.
I'll make the motion for agenda item number twenty. Do I have a second?
Moynihan seconds.
Any discussion? Vote the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carried seven zero.
Reese, any update with ABL on the twenty-three audit?
I saw there was a pay. Yes, um, twenty thousand. Yes. They, um, I exchanged emails last week with Maria. Um, but they're basically picking our stuff back up. They're supposed to send me a list of what might be outstanding. They're kind of, gotta get back into it, is what she said, and we would be getting together, and they would schedule a time to come to us.
More information gathered with, with you.
Yeah, they're supposed to kind of, and, and once they pick it back up, they kind of, I guess, shift through, what do they have missing?
Any, any, any confirmation, have a lot of updates?
I have not received that. That was both of my direct questions to them, and also said, we anticipate rolling right into twenty-four, right? So, and I, I, I know whenever I talk to Mr. Carr, one of the things I said was I would get an update for the council, so I apologize, I dropped the ball on that, but I'll reach out to him as well to see if he can send me something that I can send to the council.
Yeah, my impression was to try to get, basically every two weeks, we'd yell, kind of, where are we?
My impression from all meetings, it was gonna be starting pretty quickly after we approved.
Yeah, after we approved it, yeah.
It should be.
Should be starting.
Like a fire.
Yeah, I know that was one of the reasons.
Yeah, we approved it so quick.
We had, uh, probably the one at our.
Merg, the Merg meeting, yeah. So, they act like it was written on up to prove, so they could roll them.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
All right. Any, uh, issues with consent agenda as presented? Are there any questions?
Only, I have one question on number twenty-two for the Witch's Wall. Um, if they still congregate like they normally do at the intersection of Main and Second, we either need up some additional officers or more street closures or something. I don't know if they're moving it. I know that I know it used to be the hangout was that social chair.
Right.
So now, Old Town Merchants has it, so I don't know if they're moving like the judging and all of that, because at one time, I don't know how somebody didn't get hit there a couple of years ago, so, adjusted.
Seems to me like they're moving into Cube Street.
I know, that's what I'm saying, where they're moving the judging and everything to that area.
I don't know if they'll still do some of the judging in front of some of the shops, but I think the main thing gonna be over on Cube.
Okay.
Cube, yeah.
That makes, that makes.
Registration information and t-shirts.
And, and they'll probably still be doing some, we'll make sure we have officers available, Roy. He does a great job of that and everything. He may be off now.
Any other questions?
He has to get a day off sometimes.
No.
Any other questions or concerns with the consent agenda? I'll call for a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda as presented.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman DeSalo, do I have a second?
Smith.
Second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion? Vote the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carried seven zero. All right, we're gonna move on to the attorney's report. I do see we have something.
What I had before you was a resolution setting a hearing, and I would ask that Caitlin also put the tax parcel numbers into that motion. But, um, it does not actually have an address, but the location is that old gas station that sits next to uh, Jason Kneecy's office on the service road, so. Say that again?
Thank you.
Yes, so we want to go ahead and set the hearing. We set it far enough out, um, because this is owned by a corporation, so I'm assuming that we will get some I, I almost said pushback, but I know that corporation world is not, you know, they're not, they're not from here, so they're gonna have to send somebody in and look at it. But we have tried via code enforcement to send letters and to get them to take action on this property, and nothing's happened. So I think the, the next thing, the next logical step is just to set this for lighted property and see what we can do that way.
It looks unsafe with all the kids living in the corners behind it and stuff, you know?
And there's random people coming in and out of it all the time. It's really become a public nuisance.
Well, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution to setting a public hearing for tax parcel one-three-seven-eight dash zero dash four-five dash one-three-eight point zero-zero-zero, and one-three, parcel one-three-seven-eight dash zero dash four-five dash one-three-seven, to determine if parcels of land are a menace to public health and safety to welfare of the community.
Motion.
Motion of Councilman DeSalo, do I have a second?
Smith.
Second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion?
And just, I don't think we said it, but the hearing will be held on October seventh, twenty-twenty-five.
Uh, any discussion? Vote the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carried seven zero.
September second.
Do we want to look at some dates for the lease workshops, or is that something we can send out and then come up with at our next meeting, or do we want to do it now? I don't, I know we got our, you know, budget and meeting coming up and public hearing, so.
Second of September.
I mean, that's waiting till after that. Maybe have the public hearing for the budget and then?
And this may not be any of my business, but I'm gonna tell you anyway. Um, I think you want to give some of these entities, I mean, if you're asking for their financials, you're asking for their I, I think it would be, I guess, polite to send them a meeting, ask, say, this is what we need, give them adequate time. What is adequate, I don't know. Most of these organizations should be able to come up within a week, I would say, of their, their budgets and audits, and, I mean, they should have that all in a folder sitting on somebody's hard drive. But that's what I would just say is, you know, ask them for the information, and then, 'cause if you go to a hearing or you set a meeting and they don't, you don't have that information yet, it's pointless.
Reese said we don't have any of that yet. I know we discussed that, that the budget means, we don't have any of the financials for any of the entities.
I don't have any financials from you.
Has it been requested? Has it been requested yet, or?
We asked for Alice Mosley.
We're just waiting on some of the others?
Four directors asked for the audit in nine-ninety.
Okay, and but, but we've got requests, okay.
And now, most of, no sense of setting a public hearing or workshop with them until we have to receive the information, 'cause you know, requested, won't to receive, but then we can set the date then, but if not.
We received the financial.
Yeah.
I would, I would get, um, Mr. Reese, I'll just send an email requesting it, give him maybe a week turnaround.
Yeah.
And then, once you have that information, you can, you can set them.
Yeah.
Let's do that.
All right. Uh, executive session, in need for executive session? Yep, okay, I will call for a motion to adjourn the meeting of August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Moynihan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion? Vote the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carried seven zero.
Okay.